Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Action Meeting. I believe we have a video tonight, right?
Hello and welcome to this North Penn News Update. The students, staff, and families of Hatfield, Nash, and York Avenue Elementary Schools joined thousands of schools across 40 countries in the International Walk to School Day. Local police, North Penn security, and special guests were all on hand to greet the students on this fun endeavor. As part of a North Penn Educational Foundation grant, 5th and 6th grade students at York Ave Elementary School had the opportunity to work with children's author J.A. White in a narrative writer's workshop. This workshop is part of a year-long project aimed to guide students in the development of their own unique stories. White will return to York next spring to see the students' progress and to help improve their narratives. Be prepared. That's the theme of October in North Penn schools. Here at Oak Park, students and staff learned about emergency preparedness and fire safety with a visit from the Hatfield Fire Company. A big thank you to all of our local fire companies and first responders for helping to keep our students, staff, and building safe and always prepared in case of a real emergency. Congratulations to North Penn High School English and Theater teacher Andrea Roney for being selected as a Class Nobel Educator of Distinction by the National Society of High School Scholars. Mrs. Roney's nomination by Junior Samiha Shoshi is a testament to the lasting impact that she is making on today's youth, both inside and outside of the classroom. Congratulations. The North Penn Alumni Athletic Association honored Class of 1984 alum Juliana Schulte O'Reilly with this year's NPAAA Lifetime Achievement Award. O'Reilly currently serves as a Senior Vice President and Managing Counsel of Regulatory Banking and Insurance for American Express. She talked to current students imparting advice on how to be successful in all areas of their lives. Eight individuals and two state championship teams were also inducted as the Class of 2018 in the NPAAA Hall of Fame. Congratulations to all. Next Friday is our third Knights of Honor induction ceremony. The Class of 2018 includes three outstanding individuals being honored for their contributions to North Penn. Former teachers Cynthia Loudon and Rick Carroll and Class of 1994 graduate Yolanda Wisher will be inducted on Friday, October 26th at 6:00 PM in the NPHS auditorium. The event is free to the public, so please join us in recognizing and honoring those who have brought honor and pride to the North Penn School District. Also, do not forget to sign up for this year's Thanksgiving Day Alumni Flag Football Game. All former players, cheerleaders, and band members are encouraged to sign up for this fun-filled morning of memories. Kickoff is at 10:00 AM in Crawford Stadium, and all registration can be found on the district website at npenn.org. And finally, with several building and renovation needs in the immediate future, the district is hosting a community forum on Tuesday, November 13th at 7:00 PM in the Penbrook Middle School Auditorium. Here, the Board and NPSD Administration will review the condition of current buildings, renovations, and repairs needed, and the costs associated with this work. Held in place of the November School Board Work Session, North Penn administrators will discuss finances and other current facilities' needs and past renovations and construction. You can provide feedback in person or live, online. More information is available at npenn.org. For all these stories and more, please check out our YouTube channel at youtube.com/NPTV. For North Penn Television, I'm Sam Santangelo. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled Action Meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the Board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the Board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the Board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the Board, the Board President may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just an announcement that the Board and Administration met an executive session this evening from 7:00 to 7:30 to discuss matters of personnel. Moving on then to Audience of Citizens. Anyone who would like to make public comment?
My name is William Patchell. I live at 404 Bonnyland, Lansdale, Shirley Montgomery Township. Montgomery Township's a fantastic place, and our taxes have not gone up in many, many years because of prudent management. Unlike some of the other municipal entities, they are not really doing a fantastic job. Also, what is your plan for to assist our senior citizens and small businesses? Really, you demonstrate you do not care. You don't care. You start off right with this elective process, and you go right over Act One. I don't like it. I don't think anybody else likes it. And you know what? At that ballot box, some of you people weren't even elected. You were appointed. How dare you vote on something that you weren't even, you did not understand that you were not, you were not elected by the, by the general public. You were appointed by people of similar thoughts. You have, on your agenda, that is, a further your own program on the backs of anyone that sits by and just, just happens to pay more and more each year. I will get an increase on my Social Security after a very long time of almost no increases. Figuring I need about $400 more each year for what you plan to put on my back. The only way I can protect myself now, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna get enough municipal bonds. You know what? I won't have to pay any tax on that, and I'll send you right back on the money that you plan to borrow. Yes, wage inflation's a-coming. Every person will pay more. Everyone on this Board is gonna pay more money on your taxes. And you know what will happen? Oh, we're doing good here. Remember that on your federal income tax, state and local taxes, $10,000, I'm sure that the population is gonna be real happy when they sit down and they do their taxes. Oh yeah, North Penn School District ate up my entire deduction. How's that gonna work? You know what? The people that put you in office, these bright blue people like Cory Booker and all those other people, they're gonna hate them. And you know what? They're gonna go right out. They're not gonna stand for it. The public is not gonna put up with this. The school, the school tax will devour everyone's joint return, and you can take full credit on, on how this is gonna go. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Okay, moving on then to the approval of the minutes for September 20th and October 9th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to Committee Reports. First one is the Personnel Committee. The Personnel Committee of the Board met an executive session on October 2nd, 2018 from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM to discuss a matter involving the filling of an administrative vacancy.
Excuse me, Mrs. Stoll. You missed an item for approval. Yeah.
No, the motion was to approve the minutes of both September 20th and October 9th.
Thanks, Todd. Okay. Yeah. See, I made that mistake last time. So that's how I knew. Okay, right. All right, let me try this again. The Personnel Committee of the Board met an executive session on October 2nd, 2018 from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM to discuss a matter involving the filling of an administrative vacancy, performance evaluation of administrative employee, a request for a leave for a current employee, and a discussion of prospective employees. Next up is Finance. Mr. D'Azio.
Thank you. Our committee met last on September 26th of 2018. We reviewed the monthly financial reports at that meeting and discussed the following items. Draft professional service request for proposal policy. Mr. Skrocky presented a draft policy which requires an RFP for certain professional services according to a schedule. Second item we discussed was a LERTA request. Mr. Skrocky reviewed a request from a developer for the local economic revitalization tax assistance program. The properties are located in Tallemans and Township. The developer will be making a presentation at the October 29 Finance Committee meeting. And the item that was recommended from that committee meeting to the Action Meeting this evening is the first read of two of the professional services RFP policy, and again, that's on tonight's agenda. Our next meeting will be held on Monday, October 29th, 2018 at 6:30 in the ESC. And I believe that's the shortest report I've ever had. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. D'Azio? Okay, moving on then to Safe Schools. Mr. Casa.
The Safe Schools Committee met on September 25th, 2018. Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Dur reviewed the Act 44 Grant Application, which was due on Friday, October 12th, 2018. Mr. Dur provided an update on the North Wales Safe Roots to School Program. Mr. Dur then provided an update on the PA Safe Schools Grant along with PA Senate Bill 1098. Following the Safe Schools meeting, we were notified that we did receive a $20,000 grant, which will be used for behavioral threat assessment training. Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Dur updated the committee on the progress with a mass notification system for the district. Two site visits to observe functioning mass notification systems have been completed, with two remaining to be scheduled. There was also discussion of the climate survey and the possibility of using some of the state funding from HB 1098 for an outside vendor for expediency and effectiveness. Dr. Dietrich also updated us on how superintendents across the state need to decide on application priorities for Safe Schools funding. Dr. Dietrich also commented on the testimony to the state and his request that an Act One exemption should include a school safety and security option. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018 at 6:00 PM at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Casa? Seeing none, we will move on to the Education, Community, and Policy. And that is Mr. Fusco, who is not here tonight.
The ECP meeting was held on September 25th. Student overnight travel requests were presented to and reviewed by the committee. PDE requires school districts to also develop a comprehensive plan. The school district develops a three-year plan that has a vision, mission, shared values, and action plan for continuous improvement. The purpose of a comprehensive, comprehensive plan is to establish goals and provide direction for a period of three years. Incorporated in the proposed plan for North Penn School District for 2019 through 2022, there's a greater focus on diversity, how to meet the needs of diverse learners, a more holistic focus on students, and multiple approaches to data. New business, updates concerning the cultural proficiency work, including planning and conducting a diversity forum, scheduling professional development for administrators at the monthly administrators' meeting in October. Full-day kindergarten committee of the whole met to address topics of scheduling, curriculum, facilities, transportation, possible boundary realignment, and other aspects of planning for the implementation of full-day kindergarten. Items recommended for the work session are the comprehensive plan for, this was on the October 9th, 2018 agenda, and student travel appears on tonight's agenda. The next ECP meeting is scheduled for October 23rd at 6:30 PM at the ESC.
Thank you, Mrs. J.
End of report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. J?
I have one question. Is the comprehensive plan on our website for the public to access or review?
Yes, it's posted on the website, and public review will be completed over a period of 30 days so that we can approve it at the November Board Meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on then to Support Services. Mr. Casa.
The Support Services Committee met on September 26th, 2018. Mr. Kennedy reviewed change orders for general construction and roofing at Montgomery Elementary School along with general construction at Gwinor Elementary School and Oak Park Elementary School. Mr. Skrocky and Scott, Mr. Kennedy reviewed the progress with the variance for Crawford Stadium. A hearing with the Toments and Township Zoning Hearing Board is scheduled for November 1st, 2018. Committee also discussed options for the Community Forum for Capital Projects. That forum is going to be on November 13th at Penbrook at 7:00 PM. The next Support Services Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 29th, 2018 at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Casa? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to North, yeah, North Monaco Technical Career Center. Mr. D'Azio.
Thank you. Joint Operating Committee met on this past Monday, October 15th. It was a relatively short meeting, just the routine personnel, student travel, staff request items that we considered. We also accepted the 2017-2018 Audit Report. That report's attached to Board Docs for your review. And I guess finally, we were given an update on the October 1 enrollment up at North Monaco. We're sitting just below 1,100, so that's slightly up from last year, which is a good number. There's still room to grow, but good things are happening there, and almost all of the programs are, you know, full or close to full. So, good things are happening over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. D'Azio? Okay, seeing none.
I'm sorry, I have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I recall something about their restaurant, or can you just update us on that? I'm sorry.
Sure. And I'm gonna look to Tim here. He has the little card in front of him. What's the date that the restaurant opens there, Tim? Is it next Wednesday? The soft opening was last week, and it, it opens publicly next week. Tuesday or Wednesday, I believe.
If you can find it, you win.
The open house is on the February 14th, 6 to 8:00 PM. And then it gives the hours, the daily hours for the salon, the restaurant, and bakery, and for appointments or reservations or placing an order. It gives that number. But it doesn't say what date it will start.
I believe it starts this week.
Yeah. Yes. Mrs. Ramich and I had the pleasure of attending the, the breakfast with Dr. Dietrich, and it was fantastic, so I encourage everyone to get over there and have breakfast.
It's breakfast, lunch, and dinner?
I think it's just breakfast. Breakfast, lunch, maybe. Yeah. But breakfast was wonderful.
Great.
You can also call and order ahead if you want desserts or baked items. You can schedule for parties and things like that, so it's a little hidden gem right here in our community.
Well, thanks for letting us know.
We've actually had them cater events at the high school, and the Winter Ball, they've catered, and they do a wonderful job, so keep them in mind.
Definitely will. Thank you. Okay, moving on then to the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit.
I have no report, and I was, as I was unable to attend the last meeting, it conflicted with our last Finance Committee meeting and Support Service Committee meeting. But the next meeting is November 14th, and I'll be able to provide an update and report at that time.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. North Penn Educational Foundation, Mrs. Ott.
The Foundation Board of Trustees met last on October 3rd. The successful 17th Annual Golf Outing, which was held on October 1st, was discussed during that meeting. October 1st also kicked off the Foundation's first-ever staff-giving opportunity. We're calling it Unite to Inspire. It's a month-long fundraising campaign geared toward North Penn staff, and it's off to an excellent, exciting start. As of this week, we actually have approximately $14,390 pledged. Currently, 92 staff members have donated via many methods available, and we actually have more staff members that are participating in fundraisers being held in their individual schools, with everything from dress-down days at Oak Park to penny wars at North Penn High School. So it's exciting to think what we can do between now and the campaign's end on November 1st. The window for accepting mid-year grant requests will also open this month, and we expect to be reviewing proposals in November for implementation beginning in January. At your table tonight, everyone will have, find a copy of the Foundation's most recent annual report. It was our best year ever. We raised more than $160,000 for the North Penn School District. Our next meeting is the morning of Wednesday, November 7th. Place and time is still to be determined, as we're hoping to visit one of our schools. End of report.
Thank you, Ms. Ott. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Ott?
I just have a comment. Thank you very much for breaking records and having the vibrancy of the program, and just, it's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving then on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you. The first item is in regard to the bond issue. I'd like to make the recommended action, look for a motion in a second, and then have some presentation opportunity before we vote. So the recommended action is that I do recommend approval of the attached resolution pertaining to the series of 2018 bond issue.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Perkowski.
And we do have a presentation, so I'd like to introduce Ron DeLord, who is Bond Counsel, and Wes Hall with Public Financial Management, our financial advisors, to make a brief presentation about the bond issue.
Thank you. I'm Wes Hall with Public Financial Management. And really, what we're here tonight to do is discuss the financing for the Knapp Elementary School project. To take a step back, Scott Shear and I were here a couple months ago in August just to introduce this project, and this is really the next step along the financing process for the Board approval of the Parameters Resolution tonight. So moving on to the, the first page of, of the handout. I don't know if you have the, the handout.
It's in Board Docs, if you refer to that section, the agenda item. We do have two documents. We have the actual resolution and the handouts that Wes is referencing in Board Docs.
So I'll just be briefly walking through this, this presentation. Page one just shows an update to the municipal market to give a brief overview of what things have been doing lately. Rates have been creeping up a little bit. The Federal Reserve increased short-term rates by a quarter of a percent in September. And really, while, while they increase the rates on the short term, it doesn't have a huge impact on your borrowing rates, since you'll be locking in the longer-term rates. However, you'll be able to go ahead and take those bond proceeds and invest them at the short-term rates, so that's a plus for the district. Moving on to page two. Page two shows a snapshot of the district's overall debt portfolio. The top half shows the debt service requirements, and then the bottom half shows the local effort requirements once the state share is taken out. If you were to do nothing tonight, this is what you'd continue to pay moving forward. Nothing has changed in this page since we were here last, so I'm gonna go ahead and move on to page three. Page three just shows an estimate of the upcoming financing. We're aiming to finance a total of $10 million total proceeds with this issue. We're structuring it as a wraparound structure, so what that means is we're basically going to wait until your, your debt drops, begins to drop off, and then begin amortizing the principal payments. And what this does is it minimizes the upfront budget and debt service requirements for the district. We have a March 1, 2034 final maturity and a September 1, 2019 first maturity. Moving on to page four. Page four shows the estimated sources and uses for this transaction. It's important to note, these rates are not locked in. What we are going to be doing is working over the next couple of weeks, and then we're aiming to, to lock in the rates on, right now, scheduled for October 29th. So, these are just an estimate, but I just wanted to point that out. On the uses page, the biggest component of the, the uses is the underwriters' commission, and we bid that out as part of the competitive sale process. So we won't know that until the day of the sale, but that is bid out and accounted for the, the overall rate. And then beyond that, our plan is to work on finalizing the preliminary official statement and the rating report over the next few days, and then you'll receive the money in your account in mid-December. Moving on to page six, the last page, what this is, is the, the Parameters Debt Service Schedule. And just to give a brief overview of what the Parameters does, is this sets a number of boundaries that the final financing must fall within. You know, maximum principal amount, maximum principal amount by maturity, maximum interest rate, maximum final maturity. And you're basically approving those boundaries tonight, and then when we ultimately finance, finance the bonds, we'll have to stay within those, within those boundaries. So, we'll be working with Steve closely here over the next couple of weeks. Pretty much, that's, that's the presentation in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Yes.
Can you go back to page two?
The column labeled two and 13.
Yes.
It says VOTEC. Is that?
It's North Monaco, yes. They had a bond issue a few years ago, and we actually share proportionate amount in that debt.
Oh, all right.
Yep, so we're one of the sending districts.
Thank you.
And for the Board's information, we actually have the rating call with Moody's tomorrow at 11:00 AM, so we should hear probably next week, Wes, right? Regarding our rating. We're AA1 right now, and we're certainly gonna ask for something higher. AAA would be nice. So we'll have a feel for that, maybe at the end of the call tomorrow, but they should give us our preliminary rating sometime next week.
Great.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Ron DeLord will review the Parameters Resolution.
Thank you, Wes.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I will not go over this in great detail, because it's rather lengthy, but I will just give you a brief summary. This is the legal document that we need to file with the Department of Community and Economic Development. As Wes has said, it's a Parameters Resolution, so it anticipates that maximum debt service schedule, which is attached as Exhibit B to the resolution. We will wait and file this with DCED once we actually price the bonds on the 29th, and so we will file everything with them, assuming you approve this resolution tonight. But I'll point out the highlights of the resolution. The background section talks about the project. It's for the Knapp Elementary School and any other proposed projects that you might have for the school district. We put that catch-all in, just in case there's extra funds, so that you can then use that for something else. It says the maximum amount of the borrowing will be $10 million. It approves a purchase contract of PFM, which is attached to the resolution. That will be updated with a winning bid form on the 29th with the final numbers and the underwriters' discount and all those final terms. Mr. Skrocky has the final approval on that on the 29th, assuming he thinks everything's okay. He is authorized in the resolution to go ahead and sign that winning bid form. The other parts of the resolution, it's your budget covenant, that you'll put enough money in the budget each year to pay the principal and interest on the bonds, your tax covenant, that you're gonna comply with the rules of the Internal Revenue Code. We file a bunch of documents with the IRS upon closing for the bonds, and the, a covenant to comply with the rules of continuing disclosure, which Steve has to do every year, filing updates so the bondholders know what's happening with the district. So with that, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So when the bonds are sold on the 29th, we'll give you the exact time. You're certainly welcome to come in and take a look at the auction. It's really quite interesting to see the activity. It's like an eBay auction, sort of, and there's a lot of activity right near the end. And if there are bids near the end, a new lowest bid, the auction gets extended. So it's pretty interesting. So we'll let you know what time that is, and you're welcome to come. We can have a bond sale party here. It's pretty interesting.
Just to clarify to Mr. Skrocky, if I paid enough attention during the work session, this is Phase One?
This is Phase One, correct.
This encompasses all of Phase One?
Correct.
Okay.
It does. Yeah, we're envisioning actually three phases of borrowing for Knapp Elementary School. This would be Phase One. It's also worthy to note that there is a moratorium with PDE right now with PlanCon. PlanCon is the process by which school districts, in the past at least, could go through to receive reimbursement on their projects and their debt service and so forth. So there is a moratorium through June 30, 2019. Our professional association, PASBO, basically telling us that it's unlikely the state will fund any new money for PlanCon anytime soon. They are honoring previous obligations, but for any new projects in the pipeline, it's unlikely that there'll be any state subsidy available for those projects.
So, Mr. Skrocky, just to make clear, my understanding, being new at this, this means essentially Harrisburg's not paying anything. This is what comes out of, from our local taxes, and what we can raise is bonds on our local taxpayers, or their burden.
100% of this debt will be borne by the local taxpayers. In the past, it ranged, depending on the issue, somewhere between 5 and 10% would be paid for by the state for the building projects, for the debt service, but it's unlikely to happen anytime soon that the state will fund any additional money for building projects.
And I wanted to make sure then, so of the $100 million plus that's been added to the State Education Fund this year, none of that goes in the PlanCon or anything to help out our school district?
No new money, correct. They are, in fact, the state actually had to borrow money a couple years ago to meet its obligation for prior construction projects. So there's no new money in the state budget for new projects. That's correct. I think we're in the second year now of the moratorium, so any projects that really have commenced through the first part of PlanCon, PlanCon commenced through the first part of Plancon, Plancon Part A, have not been eligible for subsidy.
Well, thank you. That, that helps to educate me as a board member and I'll do my part to make sure that the community knows as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. I think we can all agree that Knapp is in dire need of some renovations, so it is a project that we need to proceed with. Okay, so are there any other comments or questions? So we have a motion on the floor and we have a second. If there are no more comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Rhonda.
Next item is in regard to the professional services policy. I recommend approval of the first reading of the professional services policy.
So moved.
Motioned by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions?
I just want to comment that I'm really happy to see this finally come to fruition. I've been asking for something like this since I've joined the board, so.
Yes, you have.
This is a neat moment to see this actually happening, so thank you to my colleagues for the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of settlement agreements as per those listed and copies are on file in the Office of Special Education.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Porkowski, seconded by Mrs. G. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the change order to Lowbar Construction to supply roof rails for the Montgomery Elementary School project in the amount of two thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars, thirty cents. I recommend approval of the change order to weatherproofing technologies to install roof rails for the Montgomery Elementary School project in the amount of five thousand, two hundred twenty-eight dollars, nineteen cents. Recommend approval of the change order to L J Poella Construction for wall repairs. Add each unit ventilator for the Gwinnor Elementary School H V A C project in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars, twenty-three cents. And finally, I recommend approval of the change order to Donald Reesinger for additional general construction work along with a credit for the Oak Park H V A C project in the amount of three thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars, eighty-nine cents.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motioned by Mrs. Porkowski, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Are there any comments or questions?
I, I just wanted to make sure that we commend the administration and Mr. Kennedy in particular for the procurement and the oversight of these type of services and the ability to get the most out of the taxpayer's dollar with each one of these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the gifts to the district as listed for October twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motioned by Mr. D'Azio and seconded by Mrs. Porkowski. Any comments or questions, Ms. Ott?
Just a huge thank you to all of these organizations for their generous donations. Much appreciated.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the contracts for the district as listed for October eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Does it second? Motioned by Mr. McBain, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the student travel items as listed.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Ott, seconded by Mrs. Porkowski. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the extra duty changes as listed.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motioned by Mr. McBain. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, I'm sorry, was that you, Mr. D'Azio? I'm Mr. Casa. Okay. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of personnel items as listed.
So moved. Second.
Motioned by Mr. D'Azio and seconded by Mrs. Porkowski. Any comments or questions?
Just a question here, maybe Kyle for you. Are there any items on here that we need to take a separate vote on?
Uh, no.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is in regard to the capital reserve transfer. I recommend approval and the adoption of the attached resolution regarding capital reserve fund transfer for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, that fiscal year, and thereby transferring three million, six hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars, thirty-seven cents in general funds to the capital reserve fund.
So moved. Second.
Motioned by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of alternative placements as per those listed and for which copies are on file in the Office of Special Education.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned by Mr. D'Azio and seconded by Mrs. Porkowski. Any comments or questions?
I have a question. I just want to ask the administration for something like Mariki Warrington for sixty-two thousand, is that a typical rate?
It can range anywhere from on the low end, which we have at the Buckspahn Academy, around twenty thousand. Some of the placements can charge up to a hundred thousand, so it's a wide variety depending on the type of need of the student in the school.
And that's, and we negotiate that with each individual case.
We have contracts and so the facilities that we use most frequently with, we do have more flexibility in terms of what that are, and we have prepaid slots at some of them to reduce the costs. For some of them, we have schools that are approved private schools by P D E and those rates are pretty fixed.
And these are annualized, the tuition here?
These are annual.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffo. Thank you, Mr. Casa. So I believe we have the motion on floors. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on then to the finance report. Mr. Scrocky.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of quick updates. First off on our tax rebate program. The latest update with our rebate program, we've had two hundred forty-six applicants and we've issued nineteen thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars in rebates, and we're averaging a seventeen-day calendar day turnaround time from the date of receipt to the time that the check is issued. And in the work session that we had earlier in October, I did put a copy of a thank you note that was sent to the board by one of the tax rebate recipients, basically stating that every little bit helps, that there's been little increase in Social Security in the past couple of years, and she was very grateful, being a homeowner for fifty-four years in North Penn School District, that she did receive a tax rebate and was very grateful and thanked the board for that. Second item I have, we have an audit update. Just want to let you know that at the October twenty-ninth Finance Committee meeting, Mr. Ed Furman from Maui LLC will be doing a presentation on the two thousand seventeen, eighteen audit, and part of that audit will reflect the capital reserve transfer that the board did approve tonight. That transfer of three million, six hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars represents the unspent funds in the two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget. That was about a one point four six percent positive variance for this past budget year. So that was good news. Those funds now are moved over to the capital reserve fund, which can be used for building projects, renovation projects or the purchase of school buses. It's also important to note that since the money now is moved to capital reserve by the board resolution, it can never be moved back to the general fund, so it needs to stay in the capital reserve fund. Also a reminder to our property owners in North Penn School District, the end of the base period is coming up. That is October thirty-first. After that time, a ten percent penalty will apply, so we certainly encourage any property owner to get their payment into the elected tax collector prior to ten thirty-one. Finally, I do want to issue another reminder, we talked about the Support Services Committee meeting at six o'clock on October twenty-ninth. We'd like to invite the entire board to that meeting because that will be the first look at the facility study that was conducted by the Schrader Group. So we're going to have about a fifteen, twenty-minute presentation, and that'll be a precursor to, to the November thirteenth Facilities Forum. So please, if you can make it, I know we have a finance meeting with the entire board at six thirty, so if you could attend the six o'clock meeting with Support Services, that would be great. In terms of the numbers for the month of September, cash receipts for September totaled thirty point two million dollars, disbursements totaled twenty-nine point nine million dollars, leaving us with a total cash balance at the end of September, a healthy one hundred ninety-two point one million dollars, and that's up about nine million dollars over last year. And certainly with the large balance, we do invest everything we can, and I'm pleased to report that we actually hit a three point one zero percent C D this past week, so that's pretty good for one-year C D over three percent. And our liquid funds right now are at two point three five, fully liquid funds, so that's, that's pretty good. Fully collateralized, fully one hundred percent secure. So I recommend approval of the Treasury Report for the month of September.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mrs. Porkowski, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions for Mr. Scrocky? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to the ratification of bills for the month. I recommend ratification of dis, uh, disbursements for the month of September in the amount of thirty-one million, three hundred thirty-five thousand, three hundred seventy dollars and sixteen cents.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned by Mr. D'Azio and seconded by Mrs. Porkowski. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, the monthly financial reports are all listed in Board Docs for your reference. I'll certainly highlight some of those at the October twenty-ninth Finance Committee meeting as well.
Thank you, Mr. Scrocky.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other business?
I just want to take a brief moment to thank the staff and administration at Nash for welcoming me to Nash last week for Walk to School Day, and I had the opportunity to read to two third, two second grade classes and a third grade class, so really neat opportunity to, to be in the schools and work with the kids, and I just want to extend a thank you for the staff, and I see Mr. Winkles here in the audience, for welcoming me in. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Audience of citizens.
No need to, uh, no need to repetitively say my name and my address. It, it hasn't changed in the last thirty minutes, though. So that senior rebate, that, that, oh wow, that's really fantastic. I called Todd Stevens' office. Young lady there said, you know what that was? Sixty-two dollars a year per person. That was the average. I said, can you spare it? Five seventy a week? Maybe they can go celebrate and get a latte at Starbucks. That's an insult, an insult. People are making a lot of money, and you know what? Your empathy? I, I, you'd have to find it under a microscope. And response of full-day kindergarten, Ms. G., okay, not every parent wants full-day kindergarten. They don't want it. It's not required by the Commonwealth. It's hard to believe. Some people that only have one or two children, you know what? They want to enjoy their children. They don't want to put them in a daycare and get back in a cubicle like you're laying eggs for, for, for some egg farm. No. Education really is the most effective when it's one-on-one, and I don't think you're going to ever be able to afford one-on-one because I'll tell you what, the school tax would be so astronomical, no one would be able to buy a house. Okay? Some parents choose to have a full-time parent at home. Hard to believe. You know what they do with women? Oh, you stay home? Oh, you don't, you don't work? No, because it's the most important job that America has now, and it's too bad that people have relinquished that. Both people working. Why is your child dysfunctional? Well, I turn them over to people. My child's raised by people I don't even know. Isn't that fantastic? We're the only, only thing on the face of the earth that turns their, their children over to other people. You don't see any, any animal turning their, their learning experiences over to other You're socialist, one, one side of views, don't even consider anything else but quality time, quality time with a parent. It doesn't mean somebody will pay eighty thousand dollars a year and they're running all around, twenty-five kids. You think it's good? Boy, I tell you what, it could be a lot better. And when I see a, a mother and a child sitting there at breakfast, they're having a great time. They're not struggling at some sandbox with twenty-five other kids trying to elbow. I don't like it, and a lot of people don't like it. The numbers for, for kindergarten, they've been in decline for six years. It's going down, and you know why? Because people, they can't afford kids anymore.[1688.46]